I'd like to call this meeting to order, and can we start with a roll call, please?
Council President Corman. I believe he's...
Here.
Hear you, okay, I hear him, yeah. Uh, Councilmember Perez?
Here.
Councilmember Van?
Here.
Councilmember Benedetti?
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Here.
Councilmember McGurven?
Here.
Councilmember Prince?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have a proclamation, and it is Municipal Clerks Week.
Right, proclamation. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and partiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now, therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim the week of May 2nd through the 8th, 2021, to be Municipal Clerks Week. In the City of Renton, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Jason Seth, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent, and witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this third day of May, 2021. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor, City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corman?
I move the council concur in the proclamation.
Second. It's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the proclamation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Okay, we're all in agreement, so tonight, to accept the proclamation, we have our own Jason seat. Jason?
Thanks, everybody. I just want to thank the mayor and council for, uh, for adopting this proclamation this week, and I also want to thank Ed Van Bailey, my new boss. Uh, they provide me all the support and, uh, resources I need to be able to do this job. Uh, and I couldn't go without saying thank you to my staff. Tony Clark, our enterprise content manager, Melissa McCain, our public records officer, which you heard about in the previous presentation, I want to thank Kelsey for that, and Sandy Ware and Cindy Moya, our two city clerk specialists who help, uh, basically run the office, and then Mahmoud Mohammed, he is our office assistant, and he has, uh, he's been here about a year and a half, and he has scanned, uh, over half a million documents into our Laserfish, uh, records repository. So, anyway, I couldn't be, uh, successful without their help, so I just really want to express my appreciation to them and to you, and, uh, thank you.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corman?
I just wanted to thank Jason and his staff, um, so much, in addition to the proclamation, to just say, uh, it is now apparent, the proclamation is so well worded, um, people watching us at home can tell who in fact does actually run the city now, who is the clerk's office, and, uh, a great job they do, too, and, um, the modernization of all the systems to keep all those records, and of course, the, the number of records is only expanding year over year, and they just do a tremendous job.
Thank you.
And I, and, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say, I think it's a nice touch that you didn't make Jason actually read the proclamation himself, Ed read it, so you got a little break there, so I'm glad.
No, thank you.
Yeah, well deserved, and thanks to you and your staff.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's, uh, we're fortunate to have Jason with us. He does an absolutely fantastic job, and the fact that we don't hear about, uh, hear about that department a lot is a testament to what a great job he's doing, right?
Mm-hmm.
Paddling under the water, so to speak, so...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a public hearing, property sale and grant of easement to Washdaw, 405-167 flyover, and, um, I'm not sure who's doing the presentation, oh, I see Amanda's with us. Amanda Askren will be doing the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President, Councilmembers. My name is Amanda Askren with the Community and Economic Development Team. Um, tonight I am doing a public hearing for the Washdaw acquisition for the I-405 and SR-167, the flyover, but it's so graciously called. Um, there we go. So, it is located just south of 405 and on the east side of 167, in the red area shown on the map. Um, this is part of the ongoing 405 widening and express toll lane project that you guys are familiar with. Uh, this request is focused just on the area on the 167 and 405. Construction started on this area in 2016, and the city was in previous discussions with Washdaw, starting back in 2015 and ongoing, and this is the finalization of the required documents for that, um, for that construction. There are six city-owned parcels that are involved in the four acquisitions, and then we also did research to determine how those properties were purchased or dedicated to the city to make sure that the funds were allocated appropriately back into the correct account. Uh, so the first, uh, property acquisition is a TCE, a temporary construction easement, and it covers parcels A, B, C, D, and F, and as shown in blue, it's a little hard to see, it's between the teal and the green, um, it's basically a strip running through the middle of that, and then there's some also on the right side of the green. Um, there's 45,145 per feet, uh, the funds are split between the general fund and capital assets depending on which parcel and what square footage. The second property acquisition is a utility easement for parcels C and F, which is shown in orange. This is for the Olympic Pipeline that was moved during the construction, so it's to put the pipe, the easement on top of the pipeline for the post-construction. Both of these parcels are the capital asset properties, so the money would be going to that account. The third property acquisition is for a drain easement, which is the giant green, uh, area, which is currently the slail and, um, the restoration that was done in that area, which is on parcels A, B, C, D, and F. Uh, the funds are split between the general fund and the capital assets depending on square footage on that parcel. And the last one is the property acquisition by deed. This part we're actually giving to Washdaw, uh, on A, B, C, D, and F, which is shown in teal, which is the property adjacent to the highway. Um, there's also a utility easement reservation that is the solid teal area located on parcel F that we paid $100 for to keep, which is our pipe running underneath 167, so we have, uh, easement on top of that to maintain that. Uh, so the funds on this one were also split between the general fund and capital assets depending on square footage and the parcel. So, the one that I can't show in a picture is, uh, Washdaw also included compensation for damages, um, in the amount of $13,900, and this was based on the appraisal value from 2015 and the appraisal value now. Uh, it dropped due to the construction on the property, so this is just the damages to make us whole of where we were back in 2015 of what was, um, appraised at that time. The total compensation is set at $72,300, and that is for the temporary construction easement, utility easement, drainage easement, the deed, and the damages. So, it's split between the general fund and the capital assets, and to note, the temporary construction easement will terminate on November 30th, 2023. Community and Economic Development recommends that the council approve, um, the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Washdaw documents, documents for these acquisitions, and also to authorize accepting compensation from Washdaw. So, the next steps would be, if you approve, we will get, work on getting them signed and back to Washdaw for signature and recording on their end, and then also accept the compensation from Washdaw. And that is the Washdaw flyover.
Thank you, Amanda.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, this is a public, um, hearing. Do we have anybody signed up, um, to speak on this?
Mr. Mayor, I have no one signed up in advance to speak this evening. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council regarding the property sale and grant of easements to Washdaw? Public hearing. If so, please raise your hand. And I do not see any hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Does council have any questions? Or concerns? No? Okay. What is the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, uh, Councilmember McGurven?
I move that we close the public hearing. A second?
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Council President Corman, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have an administrative report.
Good evening, everyone. Join Renton Solid Waste Utility Republic Service and StyroRecycle on Saturday, May 15th, to recycle your scrap metal and expanded polystyrene, including styrofoam. This year's mini event will be held at Renton Technical College's North Parking Lot at Northeast Sixth Place and Monroe Avenue Northeast. Masks are required for entry. For more information, please visit rentonlaw.gov/springrecycle. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/trapping. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, next up, we'll open up the remote audience comment period. It remains the strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agendas. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. You'll be called upon by a city staff member. The staff member will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker of, you've been unmuted. This is the speaker's cue that it's their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name and city of residence and the topic you are addressing. Speakers should be able to see a timer on the screen, and please try and finish up your comments when you see the time is close to expiring.
Mr. Mayor, I have no one signed up in advance to speak.
Okay.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council? If so, please raise your hand.
We do have one hand raised.
We do have one hand. Uh, Carmen Rivera. Carmen, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Carmen Rivera. I'm a Renton resident, and I am speaking again regarding Officer Trevor Davidson. Um, in the weeks since I've spoken with you, an email was received by Renton Police Department interim chief John Schultz that explained the investigation to Trevor Davidson's association with the known Proud Boy leader, Ethan Nordean. Um, it was completed by the Renton Police Department commander. The discipline review board consisted of Renton Police Department, uh, two commanders and one sergeant, and the only thing that can, was concluded from the investigation is that he was in violation of not reporting that he was in a business venture, and the only consequence he received was a written reprimand, which is pretty much next to nothing. The first problem with the investigation is that it only focused on the fact that the Renton Police Department's policy, um, states that members are prohibited from associating with individuals or groups that are involved in felonies or criminal behavior, which is very limiting, and because we understand our criminal system is very subjective, and there are people who are disproportionately represented in that criminal system, and people who also can get away with a lot of things. Second, and to that point, Ethan Nordean's alias was not included in that investigation, so it is yet to be known if his alias was found guilty of any criminal charges. Furthermore, consisting of, or concluding to the fact, excuse me, that the investigation is shaky at best, and investigations into police personnel shouldn't be conducted by police. We understand that is a huge conflict of interest. For, uh, a second problem is that the story that was given, the narration that was given in this email regarding the, or in the investigation that was explained in this email, um, is, the story was inconsistent. See, there was a story that came out in February 2021 that a, another commander reported that Davidson said that he met, uh, Nordean in 2017, and that same story then reported, a witness came forward and said that they had seen Ethan Nordean and Trevor Davidson together on several occasions prior to 2017. So, then the investigation comes out, and Trevor Davidson didn't admit that he had known Nordean since 2014. This is inconsistent, and shows that either Davidson was lying or someone had the wrong information. Either way, it looks very bad. And then, the second part is that, you know, Trevor Davidson claims that he didn't understand the extent or knew that the Proud Boys were a hate, or known hate group, you know, thought that they were a, I think it was a social conservative group, which is laughable to me, if you have been following just the daily news, as I imagine Trevor Davidson have done. See, this investigation, your people who did the investigation only looked for what they wanted to see, and it was poorly done from what I've been able to read, and it needs to be reopened, and you need to look back into Trevor Davidson, and it shouldn't be limited to only his involvement with someone who has a criminal activity, because his involvement in business with a known Proud Boy leader, someone who got national morality for a major pu, knockout punch in Oregon, a man who was on, who gained national, national morality from a Proud Boy leader, and has been a known Proud Boy Seattle leader for years. He's been out and proud about this, and you're gonna tell me that Officer Trevor Davidson didn't know this about his business partner, and didn't know that the Proud Boys were an extremist hate group that showed up to LGBTQ reading hours with drag queens, they show up to these events filled with beautiful joy with guns? RPD just showed up and did nothing to the fact that there were Proud Boys at this drag queen story hour protesting a lovely event with guns, just like RPD didn't do anything about the fact that there were the pistols at our Stanford Justice protest just a couple Saturdays ago. RPD needs some internal investigations to be done into their practices on how they handled the Proud Boys and any other affiliations they may have. Furthermore, we understand the Proud Boys are, been recognized as an FBI hate group, and so maybe RPD needs to change its policies, that your officers shouldn't have associations with anybody who are part of any known hate group, rather than being selective in how they're investigating their officers and finding ways just to give them a little slap on the wrist. Again, your safe space, safe space program will not be effective if, again, you're going to have police officers who can have businesses and affiliations with known Proud Boy leaders with no consequence, because, again, I am not going to call 911, edger, as long as I know that Trevor Davidson is an officer with them. So, I really hope you take this seriously and ask for a new independent investigation to be done. Thank you.
The next person is, uh, the Renton Chamber of Commerce. Diane, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to, to quickly jump on here. Diane Dobson, CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce, and give kudos and accolades to Teresa Nishi and for a full department who put on the most magnificent volunteer appreciation, um, reception and, and recognition this, this past week. Teresa missed, there was nothing, no, nothing left unturned. She did an absolutely magnificent job. Um, the engagement on social media, or on Zoom platform for the volunteers, some of which who haven't seen each other in over a year, was beautiful, heartwarming, and touching, and nothing less than what I would come to expect from the staff there at, at, um, City of Renton. So, council, I know many of you played a part in it, Mr. Mayor, and, and Chief Van Bailey, I know you did too as well, so thank you to, to everyone for continuing to do that outreach. I know in our breakout session, we had over 200 years of service, uh, and that was just in, in one group that was recognized that night, so thanks for the continued work that you do. You are appreciated.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, last minute, we had somebody jump in here, um...
I'm, oh, I'm sorry. Ally? Ally, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I'll be quick. I just wanted to second what Carmen said. I was vaguely aware, I live in Renton, and, um, I, I'm not sure what council's capacity is to, um, you know, advise the police department. I'm hoping you have a lot of agency there, but I think there were some really good suggestions made. I think, uh, you know, if anything, like the past year has really showed us that there is, uh, distrust of police departments, particularly in marginalized communities, and it's really unsettling to me that the, um, safe space, one of the actions that's recommended in, for that participation is to call 911, and knowing that you can have an officer who's affiliated with Proud, a Proud Boy person, um, and conducting business with them, you know, after that group was already designated by the FBI as a hate group. So, I would just also really ask that that's something that y'all think about and prioritize, and in whatever capacity you have, to, uh, take on some of those recommendations. Thank you.
I see no one else, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, we have the consent agenda. There are three items on the agenda for council consideration.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corman?
Yeah, at this, uh, point, I'd like to ask if any council members would like any items removed for individual consideration. Uh, seeing none, I move approval of the consent agenda as published. Second?
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council, um, approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Onto unfinished business. Okay. On my list. Okay, um, Council President Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Services Committee has one report.
Okay, Community Services Committee committee report, appointment to Renton Municipal Arts Commission, Karen Sumption. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrent, uh, excuse me, the Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to confirm Mayor Pavoni's appointment of Ms. Karen Sumption with the term expiring December 31st, 2021, to the Renton Municipal Arts Commission.
Thank you, Jason. Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Van?
Yeah, I move that the council, uh, council concur in the Community Services Committee committee report.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Van, seconded by Councilmember Benedetti, that the council concur with the Community Service Committee, Committee Report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries. Let's see here. Councilmember Benedetti?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Halloran?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Committee has a couple of committee reports to present.
Okay, the first is regarding the Washdaw documents that Amanda spoke about earlier. The Transportation, uh, Committee, Committee, the Transportation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the Washdaw documents for the temporary construction easement, drainage easement, utility easement, and quitclaim deed, and accept the compensation in the amount of $72,300 for same.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember McGurven?
I move that council concur with the Transportation Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Transportation Committee Committee Report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, the second report is regarding appointments to the Renton Airport Advisory Committee. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to confirm the following appointments to the Renton Airport Advisory Committee. Mr. Robert Rovai, Benson Hill Neighborhood, primary, term expiring May 7th, 2022. Mr. Aphejet Patil, Benson Hill Neighborhood, alternate, term expiring May 7th, 2024, and Mr. Vincent Nguyen, Highlands Neighborhood, alternate, term expiring May 7th, uh, 2023.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McGurven?
I move that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Transportation and Aviation Committee Committee Report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries. Councilmember Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have legislation, and it looks like we have two resolutions. One ordinance for second and final reading.
Yes, sir. It's all stuck together. So, the first resolution is regarding, uh, mending the, uh, fee schedule. So, a resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the 2021, 2022 City of Renton fee schedule.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, Councilmember O'Halloran?
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the second resolution is also regarding the Washdaw documents, uh, that we've been discussing this evening. So, a resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the sale of a portion of city-owned property, grant of a temporary easement over a portion of city-owned property, grant of a drainage easement over a portion of city-owned property, and grant of utility easement over a portion of city-owned property to the State of Washington Department of Transportation, Washdaw, in relation to Washdaw's I-405 SR-167 interchange direct connector project, accepting damages from Washdaw, and authorizing the mayor to sign the necessary documents and take the necessary actions to transfer title and grant the easements.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember McGurven?
I move that the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Great, and the final, uh, legislation is an ordinance for second and final reading regarding the, uh, biennial budget. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the City of Renton fiscal years 2021, 2022 biennial budget as adopted by ordinance number 5991 in the amount of $162,306,810, adopting an amended 2021 City of Renton salary table and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, uh, Councilmember O'Halloran?
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the ordinance be adopted as read, and this is second reading and requires a roll call.
Okay, Council President Corman?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Van?
Aye.
Councilmember Benedetti?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven?
Aye.
And Councilmember Prince?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay, thank you, motion carries. All right, we are on to new business. Uh, Council President Corman?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, two meetings to announce, uh, both of them for Monday, May 10th, the week from today. The first is at 6 o'clock PM, committed the whole meeting, that's via video conference. Three items on that agenda. The first is 2022 to 2027 business plan update, and, uh, as a reminder to council, this is follow-up to our council offsite. These are some of the changes that we, we're asking for. Um, the second item is the 2020 Mayor Inclusion Task Force Report, and the third item is the inclusive purchasing update. So, I think all, all three of these items are ones that councils, I had a lot of interest in, and should be a good meeting. Then, um, uh, following, committed the hall at 7 o'clock PM, will be our regular council meeting, and that will, of course, be video conference. And that is all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Perez?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Van?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, no new business. Um, I do want to thank community members for speaking, and, uh, thank you for staff for the wonderful volunteer...
wonderful volunteer appreciation event. Very much appreciated. I am concerned with one of the comments regarding Safe Place and our officer being involved with Proud Boys. So there's something that's just on my mind right now, wanted to, we'll talk more about it offline with you, Mr. Mayor, but just kind of thanking our community for coming out and sharing their concern with us, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Benedetti?
I have no new business, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember O'Halloran?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, May 10th, at 4:00 PM, the Finance Committee will be meeting via video conference. We have four items on the agenda. Fee waiver request for Farmers Market 2021 season, Liberty Park Playground Replacement Project, Sound Transit Agreement for the South Seventh Corridor Improvements Project, and finally vouchers. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McGurbin?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Planning and Development Committee will be meeting on Monday, May 10th, at 5:00 PM via video conference. We have three items on the agenda. Docket 16 update, Skip Work Plan update, and emerging issues in CED. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. What's the wish of the council?
We adjourn. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember McGurbin, that we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody want to stick around, say no. All right, have a good night.
Good night.
We adjourn.